Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Work Session for Thursday, December 5th, 2019, 8:00 a.m. A recording device will be used during this meeting, and I just wanted to remind everybody of public comment for non-agenda items. Rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meetings. So now, I'm going to start with the opening up for public comment for non-agenda items. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the minutes of the previous meeting, Board of Supervisors, November 7th, 2019. So I need a motion on the minutes? For what minutes? I'll start again. We'll open up the meeting minutes for the previous meeting minutes, Board of Supervisors, November 7th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve it submitted?
Yes, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to start old business with the agreement with A.J. Belinski. We're waiting on one supervisor before we get to the Carlino agreements. If we start with this, we'll go backwards is what we'll do. So, agreement with A.J. Belinski, waste hauler. I'll turn that over to Luke Revan.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We'll call this agenda item a little bit of short-sightedness on my part. When we advertised the waste hauler bid package, I'd anticipated that the majority of those bid specs would be incorporated into an eventual contract. So basically, the bid specs are the contract. What I did not include in that RFP is actually a signature page by which we could execute that we are awarding the contract to the apparent low bidder, which was A.J. Bozinski. This is important because A.J. Bozinski needs to produce for us a performance bond to replace their bid bond. And so, what's in front of you are three new pages that were not part of the bid package, and it's basically a cover letter that incorporates by reference the contents of the RFP, but includes signature lines for the board. The board has already authorized staff to execute a contract with A.J. Bozinski for waste hauling beginning in 2020. Inasmuch as this particular agreement has never been seen before, I think our legal team correctly would like the board to announce that we're executing an agreement with A.J. Bozinski. So I think it would be appropriate at this time by motion, and in this case, it's not authorizing staff because the signature lines are the members of the board, a motion to execute this agreement with A.J. Bozinski for the purpose of providing waste hauling services for the first three years of the contract we bid out this summer. I made that about as clear as mud. Basically, I missed a section of the bid package, basically providing you a signature line.
Okay, so I guess the question is, do I have a motion to accept the agreement between the three supervisors and A.J. Belinski?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to go back up to the Carlino developer agreements, and I'll turn that over to our solicitor, Tom Oste.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning. You have before you today several agreements that are required by the approval of the Carlino land development, the land development agreement, a land development application of Carlino East Brandywine. Those agreements include a development agreement, a financial security agreement, a form of letter of credit, a drainage improvements operations and maintenance agreement, a traffic signal easement, a covenant to maintain porous paving, a pedestrian and bicycle easement agreement, a deed fee simple for right-of-way to be conveyed to PennDOT, a stormwater management facilities operation and maintenance agreement. As I said, these agreements are all required by the township subdivision and land development ordinance or the order which finally approved the land development plan for Carlino. So in order to place the matter on the floor for discussion and comment, I have drafted the following motion for the board's consideration. A motion to approve the documents I just referenced between East Brandywine Township and Carlino East Brandywine LP, except for the deed fee simple, which is between East Brandywine Township and the Department of Transportation, all as presented at this meeting and previously circulated to the board, and authorize the chairman of the Board of Supervisors and other township officials to execute and acknowledge the aforementioned documents and further authorizing the recording as required of the documents in the office of the Recorder of Deeds of Chester County, Pennsylvania, when properly completed and funded as verified by the township solicitor and township staff. So if somebody would like to make that motion and second it, that will permit the matter to be on the floor for discussion and public comment.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed motion just read by our solicitor, Thomas Esti.
I think, are we going to talk about this?
Yeah. The procedure is, I think Mr. Esti's proposing that we have the motion a second, and then it's open for discussion before there's a vote.
All right. So I'll go ahead and second. All in favor?
Well, no discussion.
Okay. So, all right, so we'll open it up, I guess, first we'll start with the supervisors and then open up to the audience. So, any questions by either of the supervisors?
I don't have any questions, but I would just want to put on the record that there were some issues raised with respect to the motions, with respect to the various agreements, and I believe that all of those issues were appropriately addressed in a confidential memorandum that Mr. Esti forwarded to the board yesterday. So I just want to make it clear that we have had some correspondence with our solicitor's office about questions regarding those agreements and that he has addressed those questions.
Yeah, and I was going to basically say the exact same thing, as well as the fact that we've had these now for several weeks, and several emails have gone out if there was any questions for this. We had the opportunity to go through our engineers, vendors, staff, attorneys, et cetera. Hearing none, I felt comfortable with what was discussed with these solicitors as well. Supervisor?
Well, I have a lot of problems with it. Number one, as far as the indemnification, Tom, you had said that, you know, we could just go after them if they fail to...
Well, just if I may, just to clarify the issue which you have raised to me, you raised yesterday and on previous occasions, you have concerns that if the jury of you or a court eventually determines that the just compensation to be paid to the condemnation is in excess of the amount of financial security we have for that, we would have to pay that, or the township would have to pay that from the general fund and then try to recover it from Carlino East Brandywine. First, I would say that issue really isn't directly related to these agreements, but I certainly...
Well, sure it is.
I certainly respect the question. But in any event, what I advised the board and Mr. Winters, including Mr. Winters, was that Carlino East Brandywine or a related entity will own the property and will, obviously, that will be an asset of Carlino East Brandywine or a successor. The successors are bound under the development agreement, and then if the township did have to sue East Brandywine Carlino, obviously, it would be, it could be a lengthy process, but I think it's reasonable to conclude that we could recover that money from Carlino East Brandywine. The other thing I would say is that so far, as far as I understand, Carlino has been, has complied with everything it said it would do relative to reimbursing the township for expenses. So I think there is some track record of good faith on the part of...
They haven't really had to pay much other than legal bills. They haven't, the plans were all approved contingent upon almost everything. Traffic impact fee, our order states that it shall be paid upfront, but the developers' agreement states otherwise. I'm concerned about the credit issue for the connector road, being that their construction costs are estimated at 1.6 million to 1.7 million. And they're going to use that to be able to try to get credit for the connector road when the roads cost a lot less than that. Al Myers gave them a price of 1.1 million back in July of 2018 that they submitted for the grant application for the second one. That's a big difference. And although you had said that that money's included in the financial agreement and the escrow you're going to put upfront, I'm concerned about what's going to be credited towards the road, because that's another half, that's an extra half million dollars that they're going to get credit for. Second, I believe the North Cottiesville intersection, 322, I think we need to clarify that that shouldn't be part of the credit, because that's not the connector road.
If I can respond to that issue, the...
Yeah, we can go one at a time.
Yeah, that would help me. The amount of the credit will not be determined until the road is completed and the developer submits to the township substantiation for the money it spent on the connector road. So these agreements don't lock the township into a specific amount at this point. The agreements merely say, I shouldn't say merely, say that once the road is completed, the township will determine the credit. So we're not locked into that now. As you say, there may be indications now of what's being escrowed for the amount of the road, but we are not bound by that in calculating the credit.
But we still are, we should collect it upfront and put it in our traffic impact fee account, though, like we do with every other developer. Why are we not doing that for this one?
Well, our interpretation is that's not what the agreement is.
It's the first sentence.
It isn't what the order required.
Well, the order, the first...
Yeah, I agree that the first sentence says, but when you read that paragraph, which I think is 17, read as a whole, it's obvious to me that the credit is established, and then they would pay us the difference if any.
Is that in the order, or are you talking about the number 19 in the order?
It's in the order. I don't remember the paragraph off the top of my head.
But I believe...
But I agree with the first sentence of that condition in the order does say that Carlino shall pay a traffic impact fee.
And they, did they, they accepted it?
They did accept that condition. But as I said earlier, if you read that condition as a whole, they pay the balance of the traffic impact fee after the credit is calculated.
I mean, but again, that's like asking, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission. We should be getting that on the front end just to secure it for the township. Wouldn't you agree? I mean, it'd be safe.
Well, I think we, well, I guess in hindsight, perhaps that's a good observation, but that's not what was imposed as a condition of the order.
But we can...
In fact, that, in fact, that was, well, we don't have the authority to do that. In other words, we, they, Carlino has the obligation to sign agreements consistent with our approval and the township ordinances.
And then it's ambiguous, then it'll go towards the township's language, which the first sentence says they shall pay. So I don't know how that could be misconstrued between others' lines, but that's fine, and we can go on.
I would just note that in other situations, not involving the traffic impact fee, because we, I don't think we've done a credit for a traffic impact fee in the past, but we have done it for the fee in lieu on recreational facilities. And in those situations, I do not believe that we've required the developer to pay the fee in lieu in advance and then reimburse them when the credit is determined. And with respect to your issue on the potential just compensation being more than what's been tendered and which we've been, we have been reimbursed for what was tendered by Carlino, I would point out that I believe that that issue will be resolved long before the township's in a position to be issuing a use and occupancy certificate for this potential project. So I would think that the township would be in a position to withhold the use and occupancy if the just compensation hasn't been paid, and I think that that gives us quite a bit of leverage in that situation.
Well, that's because, yeah, I agree with you. I think that's because until the just compensation is actually determined and paid, that would complete the condemnation process. I guess you agree.
I agree that it completes the condemnation process, but the questions you've posed in the past few days have indicated a lack of full understanding of the condemnation process, and as Mr. Esti pointed out in his response, the township now owns that property. I know that's a concept that's a little convoluted, but the law is clear that we now own the property subject to an obligation to pay just compensation. And the condemnedee is challenging the just compensation that was tendered to them, which is their legal right to do, but that doesn't have any impact on the fact that the township now owns that land and is free to deal with that land as it sees fit.
I agree with you, but I think that we have $125,000 line of credit to cover any, any issues with the final determination, and I feel that that's not enough. You know, that was determined back in 2011, I believe. But as far as why can't we add a personal guarantee in the developers' agreement? And that way, I mean, because a limited partnership is just, you can only, you can only...
Yeah.
It's titled to what the assets are of that limited partnership. If there's no assets to the limited partnership, what are we going to do? That's a piece of paper. It's just, it's worthless. I mean, why not do what the state did? I believe the state, you would sign personal guarantee for the RACP grant.
No, that's not true.
Not true?
No.
I can, I have it. I can show you.
Sure.
Okay. But I mean, if there's no issue, if the township has no worries and everything is in good faith, I don't think there should be any issue why you wouldn't want to sign a personal guarantee if there's nothing to worry about. I just think that as far as it's our responsibility, if we're in control of the finance of the township, I think that's, I think we need to assure that the finances, you know, are, we have adequate protection. And I don't think we do right now, and, you know, we can sue them, you know. It took me four years and a quarter million dollars to collect $50,000. So, you know, is it, the township taxpayers shouldn't have to be footing any bills and having to wait for reimbursement, in my opinion.
I don't disagree with that, but I, as I said, I think we're going to be in a position, if they don't get a use and occupancy permit, if they haven't paid it, they don't get a use and occupancy permit, then they can't use the property. So I think we have substantial leverage over them.
Well, I'm, but why not get ahead of it? Why, I mean, I think our problem with the township is we're always reactive. Let's get ahead of things.
That's not being reactive. Your, your, your position...
Hey, if we can get a personal guarantee before we sign agreements, I think that's better protection.
Wow.
Would you not agree with me?
I will...
Than waiting and saying, well, we won't issue you a UNO 10 years from now.
I don't agree, because I have no idea whether Peter's personal guarantee would be worth anything.
It'd be worth more than a limited partnership.
But we have never required a developer, the principal of a developer, to personally guarantee these kinds of things in the past. So you're creating new conditions or new requirements that have never been done before.
I don't think that the township has been in this situation before.
We've been in a situation plenty of times where we take the letters of credit, we have the, we have developers' agreements, and the developer has to follow through.
Then why is the plan, why is this building not built now? It's been 10 years.
It's not built now because they haven't had final approval to build it.
But I, exactly. And this is the fourth approval. I mean, Kyle, would you want to, if the state requires, I think that we could include that language. Adventaging. That's why we don't have to worry about anything. No one will have to hear me. My next, my next thought is, as far as the, as far as the order, the maintenance and operation agreement for the porous paving, it's supposed to be recorded, executed and recorded at the same time as the plans, and I don't believe that the plans have been revised to reflect all the conditions of the order. So I think that's a little bit premature. So if we look at this packet, you have, that's the number two, so that's not ready.
Well, in response to that, we do have a letter from Mr. Klein, township engineer, indicating that he reviewed the plan, and it's been revised to comply with the order. In addition to that, before anything is released for recording, we will make sure through the township consultants and staff that all of the conditions have been complied with. And all of these documents will be recorded with the final plan. That's part of the purpose of this.
But our order states that it'll be done simultaneously, and we're not there yet?
It will be done. In other words, the plan and all the documents will be recorded contemporaneously.
But I don't see that, is the recording plan on here?
The one exception, the one exception being the deed fee simple to PennDOT. The deed fee simple has to be executed by the township and forwarded to PennDOT before they will issue the highway occupancy permit. So that's the one exception. That document will be released prior to recording of the plan.
That brings me, my next concern is, the order states that they, the applicant shall obtain their HOP permit. That has not been obtained, I believe. I haven't seen it.
Well, again, that permit will be, has to be obtained before the plan is recorded. We will not release the plan for recording until the township has a copy of the highway occupancy permit.
But the developers' agreement states that the highway occupancy permit has been obtained, and it hasn't been. So I think that language needs to be changed.
Well, it will have been obtained by the time we record the development agreement.
But you want us to sign, you want us to approve a developer agreement today, that states that their highway occupancy permit has been approved, and I'm sorry, obtained, and it hasn't been.
Again, you, you are, I mean, I'm, in a way, you're approving the format of these agreements as presented. They're not going to be signed today. We will make sure that you're authorizing in the motion, the township, the board chairman and the township staff to execute the agreements and do things, all things necessary in so many words in order to comply with the township approval.
Well, I think that if you bring, the applicant has every right to request the board to execute these agreements. However, I think, I believe the board should be, should be prepared to say, we're not going to agree to any, just execute any agreements or even to approve any agreements until they're correct, until all the...
And that, that's certainly your prerogative, but typically...
That's just general, that's just business.
Typically, the procedure is that you would, the board, not just this board, boards of supervisors approve these agreements at public meetings, and then the details of their execution and recording is handled as an administrative matter by the township staff and consultants. And certainly, as a board member, you're authorized to participate in that process. We're not doing anything...
I am, I'm permitted to?
Well, if you, if you wanted, for example, if you personally...
I have not received any of this.
Well, you did...
You start, you got, number one, Tom, your firm, who, which board member or majority, when, who authorized you, your firm, to start working on these agreements?
We have...
I don't remember ever even hearing about it. Then all of a sudden, yesterday, I get a Dropbox because I requested your correspondence. A, I didn't get yours, B, I only got Kristen's, and it started back in August, August 23rd is when Mark Kaplan said he wants to do this ASAP. We're not, in my opinion, as a board member, we're not here to just work for Mark Kaplan, we're here for the residents, and we need to do our due diligence. But I don't really understand...
Well, I'm not here...
How you guys started this without, without the board.
I'm not here to work for Mark Kaplan or, or Carlino East Brandywine. I'm here to work for the township of East Brandywine, representing you.
It's concerning.
But I would say that this is the normal and typical process. After a developer gets final approval of a plan, they are required to comply with the terms of the order, and that's what is being done here in a typical fashion.
Well, what you guys are, what's being done here is you're trying to get this pushed in before the next board, and it's evident from the emails, especially one that concerns me, that I was reviewing them at 3 o'clock this morning, when Kristen says, a long email of everything that has to be done, and the last sentence is, "The board has five more meetings until the end of this calendar year." I mean, you guys are, been working for months to get these agreements fine-tuned without the board's, without the board...
Well, that's, that's...
Without the board, can I, I can finish?
I'm sorry.
Without the board's requesting you do so, and they're still not, they're...
I'm going to dispute that, because I think that's totally inaccurate.
Jay, did you, did you? I have never seen it.
Excuse me. You asked for the courtesy of not being talked over. I asked for the same thing.
You want to get mad?
Well, I'm not getting mad.
Let's talk about it.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
I've been pretty good.
We have told this, this, we have told our solicitors over and over again, we knew that these agreements, the draft agreements were in, they were presented to us.
When? When were they?
I...
November 1st for November 5th.
No, Jason, we got drafts that I know we sent, we discussed with Kristen probably in August, and we...
You might have.
No, we all did.
I'm sorry, but I disagree with you.
Well, you can, you can disagree, but you can't change the facts, Jason. These were all given to us in a draft form, and I remember Kristen very specifically saying at the time that it was first discussed, that she had not had a chance to review them, that she was going to, she was going to review them and get back to us. Nobody at that point said, you're not authorized to review them. Normal, this is part...
August, Jay. Kristen, this was in November when Kristen, when Kristen had presented it to us, not, not anything before November.
She did present them before November.
She might have presented them to you before November, but not the full board.
Well, I have gotten nothing from Kristen that hasn't gone to everybody on this board, Jason.
Or you had the privilege of finding out about what the DEC action implications could be towards personal liability before that, before you cast your vote on the plan.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with this, does it?
But, no, but actually, it kind of does.
So, don't, don't, I'm just, I'm going on the record to say that your statement that she, that that firm was not authorized to review these is totally inaccurate and wrong.
Before November, you show me then.
No, there was no specific motion made that said, go review these. However, she told us she had gotten them from Mr. Kaplan, she told us she was going to review them and get back to us, and nobody said, don't do that.
That was November.
No, it was not November.
But then prove me wrong and forward your email, because I don't have it. So I'll just write that. Secondly, so you have the operation maintenance, supposed to be simultaneously recorded and executed, that's not ready. The HOP in the order is supposed to be obtained, that's not, so that check... supposed to be obtained. That's not, so that check off the traffic signal easement. Check off the the deed, well, they can't get that yet, just so that's on us. The stormwater management facilities and operation maintenance agreement for the H O P, for the right of way needed for three twenty-two. That's checked off. Same thing with the number five. So, which leads me to the pedestrian and bicycle easement agreement. And I reviewed that easement agreement and it's missing the parking lot. It's not a blanket easement. In the order, we required a blanket easement and the easement that we received is far from that. Um, I believe the email correspondence that I just received was stating that Giant didn't want the liability or Carlino did not want the liability. But unfortunately, it's very specific in the order and you accepted it. So I think that that needs to be addressed. I just think these aren't ready to say, yeah, go ahead and start doing them longer. If if you started in August and now it's December, it's like Groundhog Day. This was two years ago, December twentieth, when these same agreements were trying to be pushed through before I was sworn in. And they're they're just premature. We don't need to do anything right now. In fact, there was a legal memo that was provided to the board about thirty days ago. That's when I received it. Stating that it's against.
Well, I would I would caution you, Mr. Winters, not to disclose anything that's subject to attorney.
Well, I like to open, I think that everybody.
I understand that, but disclosing information that's attorney-client privileged could have adverse effects on the township.
Well, I think this is just a general, general. I understand.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
But you can't, well, I'm not done though, but as far as saying that it's been, case law states that you cannot bind a future board with government functions, government responsibilities. That was provided to us thirty days ago, your response to one of my questions yesterday was this, by authorizing these agreements was gone to bind the future board. So that right there, we're we're breaking the law.
Well, I.
Jason, we bind future boards all the time.
No, Jay, you bonded, you bound future boards.
You just did it.
How did I just do it?
You you approved a um, a contract for waste hauling and recycling that's going to cover two more boards. And you approve, you haven't because you haven't been here that long. We approve police contracts that were five years. We do bonding that's over thirty years. Boards all the time do things that have impact future boards.
I'm not disagreeing, but my point is, we don't have to right now. That's my point. Let the next guy come in and have some say in it.
Well, I've answered, I've answered that in the email too, which we'll keep confidential, but I would like to, no, it wasn't. And and I'd like to point out that we're in front of a a galley of people here. And I did put in in a email amongst the board and staff and engineers and vendors once again, if there was any questions. Because I don't think it's fair to the audience to 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 do this right here, right now.
We're supposed to be doing it in public.
I agree, but the questions could have been answered. And I asked twice if there was an email form, any questions, and I heard nothing, twice.
When?
I sent one two days ago and I sent one a week and a half ago.
I had my questions in and I just.
I didn't get any questions from you until yesterday and then a response was was formatted.
Because I didn't get anything that I requested before that until two days ago.
I never got one email of questions. For what it's worth, I just wanted to point that out. Any other questions? Because again, we do have audience members that would like to participate.
I just think that these agreements aren't ready. I I think that it's binding a future board. It's something that we don't have to do. It's not going to hold up this project, I think, out of courtesy to buying a future board when you don't need to. Twenty-five days before a new board. I I I think that's just bad practice. I think that's just, you know, it's not necessary, it's not needed. And I would hope that this board would understand that and say, let's 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 clean these up a little bit and let's bring them back on, you know. Likewise, I mean, I don't think that we should be approving agreements until we see the final product. And it's already, has altered from the order, which is concerning as well. So I would respectfully request that this board would not make the motion to approve these agreements. So they're cleaned up until the new board's in here.
Thank you. Audience members. Please, if you're going to have questions, please come up to the podium and state your name and and street address, just for for clerical reason.
George Sherbach, three hundred South Caldwell Circle. I was at the last meeting and Kyle, you you guys tabled the matter at the last meeting. But you publicly stated that this matter would not be rescheduled until all parties and their attorneys could be present.
No, I didn't. You can go back on the record, you can look. I did look that up for you guys because that was.
Okay.
I said all parties, supervisors and staff. Parties, to my knowledge, right now are here. If 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 solicitors for the parties want to come, that's totally different. I I can't, I can't say if one group has ten solicitors, I have to wait for all ten solicitors to come. So no, to answer your question, it's inaccurate.
Well, no, because Pam asked when she stood up and Paul said.
You can go back and look at the tape. I did.
I'm I'm all right.
So I'm very confident of what I said.
Pretty certain we said we scheduled.
You said all parties.
Parties, solicitors and staff.
Okay, but solicitors are more important than.
Parties, supervisors and staff.
Right, right. But attorneys are more important than the parties.
I disagree. Who has best interest, me or my attorney? Me, because I don't want to go to jail for something. So I would say I have a better interest.
Yeah, that they speak for your interests.
The legalese and the matters and what can be done or not done and what to argue, et cetera. So I disagree.
But anyway, there's your answer.
Okay, then I then I didn't hear, but I thought you said that because all parties.
Look at the tape because that's what I did.
Okay.
And I would also note that Mr. Prince did present a series of questions which, for reasons that aren't clear to me, he sent to the board and he didn't send to our solicitors, but I did forward it to our solicitors and they did respond to it. So we did have an opportunity for him to present some his particular issues and get a legal response from our solicitors to those ish, the issues that he raised.
Okay, I thought I heard. Secondly, I feel strongly that this should be tabled as well due to a new supervisor coming on board. Six years, this is a critical matter, important matter. He's coming on, he's got to live with it for six years. I feel strongly that there is no reason why this can't be tabled till he comes on board in January, in my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning. My name is Len Blair. I have a equitable interest in the Spence property and B V A. And so I'm here with a, just a short statement for you, for your consideration. And I made it short because I didn't get my coffee this morning and I'm in a hurry to get it, so we'll make it brief. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to address the board today. All through, there may be many issues to talk on. I have just picked one of high importance to the township. I think it's best to begin with a question. Assume a township is owed some six million dollars on condemnation, ultimately to be secured and reimbursed by a paper, limited liability corporation and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar bond lacking even a personal guarantee. Is this an acceptable risk? Would you approve of this risk? Yes? No? I know of no ethical attorney under these facts that would recommend signing to a client. Our appraisals are being conducted by two separate consulting groups and are close to completion on damages that have arisen from the township's taking. We expect the amount contested to be no less than four million to six million dollars. Not to mislead you, the Spence property report is now in the final draft stage and the damages alone are four million. Our stormwater easement is now in the final computation stage and will be available in the next several weeks. These two are expected to be substantial. The agreements you have before you today do not provide adequate coverage uncertainties to the township for reimbursement in those amounts. And that's a fact. How would anyone in proper mind limit or bind a township's future as proposed? These agreements need not be signed now. There is no compelling reason why the township should be bound now. There is no benefit to the township to sign now and thus no need to sign now. Frankly, doing so is shortsighted and financially irresponsible. I thank the board and wish you all Merry Christmas. And I'll give you each a handout on the matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good morning, members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Dave Broman. I am with the firm, I Schwartz and Doylestown and Arstown. And I too represent Brandywine Village Associates, Eleanor Partnership, and John Cropper. I'm speaking in Paul's absence and Gene's absence. For those who don't know me, I've been practicing municipal law for thirty-seven years. I specialize in land use and zoning and eminent domain. I am, represent both developers and municipalities. An solicitor to several in Montgomery County, Chester County, and Bucks County. Probably most notable, Upper Dublin, in Montgomery County and Lower Marion in Montgomery County. There are a couple of agreements, frankly, that aren't here, that are covered in your memorandum of understanding and your declaration of taking that I think are important, not just for my clients, but also for the township. Specifically, in the memorandum of understanding, paragraph nine, it stated that all necessary approvals needed to be obtained before construction of a project, but most notably, it required that the condemnation proceedings have concluded completely before the project could move forward. I think you have recognized that the condemnation proceeding is still ongoing. While the preliminary objection stage has concluded through the Commonwealth Court, the evaluation stage has not. So your own memorandum of understanding, which your solicitors indicate is a binding contract on the township, prevents you from moving forward because those proceedings are not concluded. In addition to the condemnation proceedings not having been concluded, the declaration action that was brought under three-ten hasn't concluded. And most importantly, the appeals of the land development approval haven't concluded. So I would suggest that the memorandum of standing in and of itself prevents you from moving forward until it is, quote, final and unadmissible, not my words, the words of the memorandum of understanding. Second, there are two points, two paragraphs I'd like to point out in the declaration of taking which contemplate additional documents that are not in your packet. I had received your packet. Thank you, Mr. Estey and Scottinfield, and I've reviewed them. But paragraph three of the declaration of taking specifically states that there will be a temporary grading easement. And that's over the condemned point two-six acres. Temporary construction easement, I'm sure as many people know, sets forth the terms and conditions upon which you will be on someone's land, how you're going to restore it, how you're going to maintain flows of traffic, and other terms that are important to either the township or to the landowner, in this case, my clients. No temporary easement for this construction has ever been presented, and that's highly unusual. I can't remember an instance in which an easement, permanent and then temporary for construction, has been verbal. In fact, it's not legal to be verbal, wouldn't be enforceable, needs to be a written contract. There's no temporary easement. Similarly, paragraph nine of your declaration of taking contemplates that there will be a license granted to condemn. There has been no license presented, and again, that controls the terms and conditions upon which they may be on the land. My clients are totally unprotected without these two written documents, temporary construction easement and the license. Again, not my document, your promise and represented to the court as its part of the declaration of taking. I'd like to briefly discuss the development. In my opinion, there's one gaping hole in the development group, and that is, it's completely silent on what we're hap, what will happen in the event there's success on appeal of the land development. There is absolutely no reason for it to remain silent. There should be specific terms that if the appeal is successful, this, 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 and that. Absent that, there's no protection to the township. It's chaos will reign, and of course, my clients are next door. So let me propose a hypothetical. You go record the plans, they pull a building permit, they start construction of your road, and the Commonwealth Court reverses Judge Griffith, and there is no land development approval. It's already happened twice. Even if you give that a ten percent chance of success, why would you leave that term silent? What is the township going to do with a half-built road? When the Commonwealth Court says, there is no land development approval. Why would you keep that silent? Any transactional lawyer worth anything will provide for that contingency in the written agreement. This is your agreement, your contract with the development. Why would you leave that silent? It makes absolutely no sense. I can't comment because I've not seen the appraisals with respect to what the value is. Obviously, it's on the margins of Supervisor Winters. You heard my client, Mr. Blair, indicated somewhere between four and six. You have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar letter of credit. Carlino and their H O P applications say that property is worth two hundred, so even according to their own admission, the letter of credit's deficient. But I pose this question. You have required letters of credit for the development costs, which the engineer proposed in the order of five million dollars. Why would you not ask for a letter of credit of four million dollars? I mean, Mr. Winter said personal guarantee. To me, it's simple. Just get a letter of credit for four and a half million dollars. Up to one twenty-five to four million, then you're protected. Why worry about personal guarantees and bankruptcies and limited partnerships? Just get a letter of credit, the amount of four million. Supervisor Fisher, you indicated the relief there would be simply hold up the U N O. I have two responses for that. One, that's not what the development agreement says. You won't find any language in the development agreement that permits you to deny the U N O if they default on the compensation for the condemnation. Not there. And secondly, it's not legal. At that point, they have the rights. The condemnation compensation is a totally different contract, totally different issue. Has nothing to do with their rights to develop this project. I guess, Mr. Estey, I I need to respond to the normal and typical process. That's your quote, that this is what's normally and typically done. Well, candidly, I don't think anything about this process is either normal or typical. It's a very, very rare case where a township condemns property for the benefit of a developer to the detriment of a taxpayer in a township.
I would disagree with that statement, by the way.
This is not normal and this is not typical.
I'll state that again. I'll disagree with that statement.
I suspected you would. Thank you for the opportunity to make comments. Any questions?
Yeah, real quick, you're representing both parties here today?
I am.
Oh, good. That makes me feel bad. We have representation too. Good.
Yeah, I'm standing in for Paul.
Okay, good, good. I was concerned. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Good morning. My name's Pamela Tobin. I represent the developer, Carlino East Brandywine LP. We're here today simply, what I thought would be a ministerial task. I understand that you had a working session meeting on November seventh where the solicitor went through each of the documents in detail, explained them, and you had time to digest them. What we're asking for today is that you sign the development agreement. And because the development agreement says that certain other agreements should be signed contemporaneously, we're also asking that the stormwater management, the drainage, and the financial security agreement be signed, and ultimately, the deed of dedication, which is a contractual obligation under the development agreement. I have to respond to Mr. Broman's remarks. I understand that Mr. Broman has not been in this case from day one like I have, and he's come in at the end, and he seems to be looking at things in hindsight. The condemnation is final. Judge Griffith overruled the preliminary objections. The Commonwealth Court affirmed Judge Griffith. Brandywine Village Associates and L and R took an appeal or requested an appeal before the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. It was denied. There is no question that the courts have ruled that the township had every right to condemn the small pieces of property that it condemned in order to build the connector road because it had a public purpose, because there's a hazardous driving condition, which even PennDOT has recognized at the intersection, that needs to be corrected. You've waited this long. There's no reason to defer action at this point. What you've heard today are hypotheticals. We haven't seen any appraisals. We just hear that there's one in process where they think they're going to get four million dollars. Well, our appraisers say much differently. We've stuck to the facts and the reality, and we have paid all of our obligations, we've put up lines of credit, and we've entered into a contract that says we're going to meet our obligations, and we will continue to do that. The development agreement is a standard document. The solicitor has approved it. No development agreement that has been in this case has ever required the language that Mr. Broman suggests. Chaos isn't going to rain. You had a development agreement that you signed before. Chaos did not rain. You adjusted as you needed to adjust, but that's pie in the sky. There's no basis for any of the arguments that they're making. And it's time to just finally get on with this, and please, we request that you sign the development agreement and the other agreements that are part of that. The other agreements, the easements and things like that, they can wait. We're just asking you to approve the language at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
One other thought. There's a guarantee to build that road. There's no way the road's going to be half-constructed and left there.
As far as... So, if it's approved today, it's approved based on the developer agreements that Luke didn't print out today? So they're not being fine-tuned? It's what is there already is approved?
Well, for example, I believe in the development...
Because you said earlier, you start the process of fine-tuning it, but she's saying approve the language, and so which one is it? Is it...
The development agreements, the development agreement is in final form.
Is it in final form?
For example, I think in the development agreement, there's a blank where one has to fill in the recording information. Obviously, you can't fill in that recording information until the plan is recorded, and we know what that information... Those are the kinds of things I was speaking about. The substantive part of the documents will not be changed.
So, it's saying that there's already the highway occupancy permit has been obtained and hasn't, so the information's incorrect? Or not all correct, should I say? Not all information's incorrect, but certain items...
Well, as I said earlier, by the time, and I don't know, I'm taking your word for it, that it says that, but as I said before, when that development agreement won't be recorded until the HOP is obtained.
Correct, but it's approved now, though, because I'd read it, the developer agreement, and I read the correspondence, Kristen and the attorney, Mark Kaplan, and that was one, you know, it's... Mark Kaplan drafted these agreements, and then you guys fine-tuned them and went back and forth and changed it.
Well, I... I'm sorry.
And I think that some of the information needs to be corrected before we approve anything, because it is incorrect.
These agreements, well, I should say this, the development agreement at the least is based on what we call the township form. In other words, this is an agreement that's typically used in subdivision and land development projects. It was edited and customized primarily by our office in order to make it comply with the approval of this project. So, Mr. Kaplan nor his office drafted these agreements. Some of them, which are sort of ancillary, like the poorest paving agreement, his office drafted. We reviewed it and approved it.
But there's other stuff, there's... There's certain sections of these agreements that are incorrect, so I think that if anything, we need to go back and correct them. You know, what happens if for some reason they don't receive the highway occupancy permit, just for some reason? Then what?
They can't record the plan, and they can't move forward with anything.
But they can sue us because we allowed them to do that? That's my point, is we, they expended monies based on approvals, and we signed a deed over for something that's not obtained.
The township doesn't have any control over the HOP, or little control, I should say. That's a PennDOT...
We're required to be a co-applicant.
Penn... No, we're required, but it's issued by PennDOT. We don't issue that permit.
Correct, but I mean, PennDOT usually says, as long as the township's okay with it, then we're okay with it, and we're actually required to be a co-applicant in this case. So I think that everything needs to be correct. We need to, you know... I'm not saying we don't want to sign these, we're just saying, let's get the information correct, that's all. That way, we don't have to worry about any issues.
I'd like to point out, we have had this copy of the agreement for weeks now, and any questions that I had were well answered weeks ago, as well as solicitors from both parties have had a chance to read it as well, and then questions from the solicitors for the parties have been answered as well. So I'm very comfortable on that. The second thing I would like to point out is, this is a case that's been going on for years, eight, ten-plus. So to use the term rush something through at the last minute, I honestly find that to be a little bit of a nonsense statement.
How do you figure? We got it November first.
Because, again, this is not something that's been rushed through. This has been through the process.
It's been worked on since August, and we don't get to see it for three months, and we don't even approve it to go in the first place.
And then, lastly, everybody's concerned about a new supervisor coming in. I think that that would possibly hinder the situation, because now the taxpayers are going to be watching somebody get caught up to speed to something that we've had the option for years of following and being involved with. So I think that that would be a disservice to the taxpayer for what that's worth. But I'll let you continue your statement, but I wanted to point that out.
Well, no, I would agree on certain things, but you know, it's not, unfortunately, though, you know, he was just elected by the citizens of East Brandywine. It's the timing, it's not the, you know, and now we have to get him up to date, the plans have already been approved. These agreements have been ninety percent drafted, and it's not a matter of getting him up to speed, it's the common courtesy of not binding him. You know, we have lawyers to bring him up to speed. We have Peter Miller, Pam Tobin, anyone can bring anyone up to speed, but I don't think that that, you know, this has been going on for nine years, and we're rushing this through. We are rushing this through.
I disagree, but that's okay.
Oh, we just got it thirty days ago. Thirty-one days ago, we just received these agreements for the first time.
Yeah.
But they were being worked on in August, and I didn't know about it. I just got that email correspondence yesterday, so...
And it's somewhat disingenuous to say that you just got these thirty days ago.
Jay, do you want to look? Look at my email.
Excuse me! Mr. Winters! I would appreciate...
Don't tell me that I don't know what I'm talking about, sir.
I would appreciate the courtesy of hearing me out without interruption.
Ah, I'll tell ya.
These are substantially the same agreements that were presented to us two years ago. So to say that you have only had them thirty days is inaccurate.
And we did not...
You had them two years ago, there've been some modifications made to them, but don't say you never saw these before.
Jay, I wasn't here two years ago when you guys were actually going over these agreements. In fact, I wasn't allowed in the room, even though I was going to be the next supervisor a week later.
You weren't sworn in.
Oh, swore, exactly. But I agree with you, Kyle, that you thought it was good because I should be there, because I'm going to be responsible for carrying this business through. Second off, that was a different plan, Jay. That wasn't this plan. So don't sit here and say that this has been forever, you know, even though the MOU says that it's going to be somewhat compliant with the plan that was approved in 2011. A plan does plan, it has to fit, it has to sit on its own. When those plans are reversed, they're starting over. They don't have to re-engineer, but make the tweaks of whatever the court order reversed it or remanded back to the board, you know, so...
The key character is...
As far as the email, yes, I requested the correspondence, and you guys are copied on it. It's like two days ago. And I just received a drop box. I was not copied on one email in there, so...
Are you speaking of correspondence that had started in August for setting up the agreement? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about in general. I'm never copying on emails.
No, I disagree with that.
Well, our solicitor doesn't like to copy me.
Well, if it involves the supervisors, you most certainly are copying.
Well, Kyle, that was the, that's what the board has instructed them back in the special meeting in January of 2018. It hasn't happened, and I just received the correspondence, but...
In response, we endeavor to copy all three supervisors on anything that we send to the supervisors. There are emails that go back and forth between council and other things that are not copied to the board of supervisors. We did not, that's our job.
Who's your client?
In other words, we're charged with handling the legal matters of the township, so we do not copy the board of supervisors on every email.
But who's your client?
And that's not how we understood the instructions.
Kristen sat right here and specifically asked Kyle, to be clear, how do you want me to communicate? Do you want me to just go? Usually, it's typical to go with the manager and the chairman, and Kyle said, no, we've had issues in the past with not all supervisors being copied. We prefer to have, be copied on all correspondence. Has not happened since day one.
Well, that's not...
Or this is laundry that could be addressed at a different time.
So, but in response to Jason's comments, I think the key characterization was that this plan represents a tweak. It's not a substantially different plan. It is substantially the same plan, and I think if you go back and look at the developers' agreements that we looked at and that you had copies of two years ago, you'll find, you'll find that they are substantially similar to the ones that are before us now. So I again say, to say that you've only had these for thirty days is inaccurate.
Jay, I didn't review them two years ago because they were never signed.
They were available to you to review.
Why would I review something if I'm not going to be there to say yes or no? I didn't...
That was your choice.
I don't review things that aren't going to be signed. I don't have time. And that's the point. Two years ago, these same agreements were before us, not signed. So for the last two years, they could have been brought before us again, but they weren't. But then all of a sudden, November, let's put them and get this approved, we've got five meetings left.
And you're the one that pointed out that this started in August, so to say that this happened in November...
I didn't know about that until yesterday.
You knew about it because we had discussions with Kristen Camp about it.
Like I said, you're going to forward me that email.
I didn't say it was an email. We had executive sessions, and she informed us that she had received the draft agreements from Mr. Kaplan, and she, at the time, she had not had an opportunity to review them. She was going to review them and get back to us.
Yes, that was in late October.
Okay.
I just, the agreements, if they're approved today, with the language that's in there, the language, some of it's incorrect, I think that's, I can't see how we should sign these. I mean, table to the next meeting in December, in the evening then, and try to clean it up, or something, but I think that protection, financial protection, and accuracy, I mean...
Well, we, I think we've reviewed these agreements extensively, and it's our opinion
that they protect the interests of the township.
Can you provide a legal memo and an opinion?
I think I said yesterday, if the board wants us to provide further legal analysis, and we're directed to do so, we will.
I think that's important.
I'm not sure what issue you want us to address, but we can discuss that after the meeting.
Well, it's not correct. The information's not correct. So, is it in the best interest of the township?
I've already said that we've reviewed, we've spent hours and hours reviewing these documents, and we recommend, we believe they protect the best interest of the township.
But they don't follow our order that they approve, agreed to. That's the thing.
They do follow.
What's the point of having an order if you don't follow it?
Well, that's, our opinion is, the agreements are consistent with the order.
They're not, though. I just quoted them now, show them to the HOP. I don't even have a full copy.
I respect your opinion, but...
But it's not an opinion. I'm stating a fact. It just says right here about the first one. I mean, there's a bunch of things that need to be...
...advertised for the pledge of...
And not to mention the MOU, but that statement, I wasn't even aware of that. The MOU is stating that they can't move forward, and, you know, we can't just keep...
So, I'm going to throw something out here as a respect or a courtesy, so to speak. Supervisor Winters just made a comment that hold it to the next meeting. We've kicked this can now for several meetings. Out of respect for only one or two of his concerns, I'm going to put a motion on the table that we table this until the next meeting, which would be December... Scott, what's the next meeting, December?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. If, in fact, that is a possibility, I'm not going to make the statement for everybody and anybody who can be here. I'm suggesting that only as an option right now. The second option would be, there's a possibility of a special meeting to be held at another date in December. Wondering if that other meeting could be inclusive of this as well. I don't know this, but I want to be clear that this is not something that is getting pushed through at the last minute, but out of respect, I also think that everybody up at this table should be comfortable with the answers that are provided and comfortable in making a decision whether it's right or wrong, or yea or nay. So I'm going to put that on the table and see what discussions the board has.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm not clear on what would be accomplished by deferring it. In other words, I've made, we've made a recommendation to you that the agreements are proper and in order, and I've heard the comments from various people. Those matters cannot be incorporated into these agreements. As Mr. Broman indicated, withholding a UNO is not legal in his opinion, well, nor is demanding personal guarantees when you have no authority to do it. So some of the issues raised...
Why don't we have authority?
We don't have the authority.
We're a township, and we're protecting the interest of our taxpayers.
We don't have the authority to do it. We don't...
We can make that authority right now if we want to.
There's no statutory authority to require personal guarantees. That's why we get financial security.
Then why did the state do it?
I don't know that the state did it. I can't respond to it.
What I would like to...
But the other matter that was raised is, in the declaration of taking... But the other, the other matter that was raised is, in the declaration of taking, there was reserved to Brandywine Village Associates a license, which is a personal right to have continued access to the property during construction. The board is probably not aware of this, but the H O P contains a multi-sheet detailed traffic management plan, which provides for continuous access to the Brandywine Village Associates Shopping Center during construction. That will be part of the H O P, and, and by the way, is typical. In other words, it's the same as any construction project. The contractors and the municipality have to guarantee, or assure, I should say, that traffic flow continues. Now, that's not to say that during some brief period of time, traffic will be interfered with because that's unavoidable. But there's nothing in the declaration of taking that requires the township to enter into any kind of written license agreement. That was handled with the H O P. So I certainly respect the chairman's idea, but I'm really not clear on what will be accomplished by delaying this any further.
Well, we can, I'll, I'll pinpoint what page, what item number is incorrect and, and as far as-
Well, I'd like to, real quick, first, I, I think it's, it's strong to say incorrect. Something that may-
The fact is incorrect.
Well, again, I think it would be more a concern that you have would be, would be a proper term versus an incorrect fact, because that's your opinion versus their opinion versus their opinion versus his.
What I'm saying is that if, if our order says, "You shall obtain the highway occupancy permit," and this developer's agreement says they've already received it, that's incorrect.
But we also know that shall, will, and can are also all used in different terms.
Shall's must.
But for the sake of this, what, what I would offer is to take a five-minute recess with our solicitor and return at 9:20 to discuss possibility of some legal options. And again, we'll return in five minutes.
Chairman, may I say something for your consideration to go back?
Quickly.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's really just to respond to the solicitor, Estee's, last comment with respect to what I said. You absolutely can't deny a U N O because they don't pay compensation. There's no connection. However, what I was suggesting is to cover in your development agreement the contingencies that could occur and have Carlino agree that if that were to occur, the appeal were to be successful, the compensation is $6 million and they don't reimburse the township, and there's probably three or four more, that they would agree to not bring an action against the township, in mandamus to force a U N O, and they'd restore the property to the condition it existed before they started construction. If they agree to that contractually, you're protected. So with all due respect, I agree as a matter of law, if it's silent, you can't hold it up. But they certainly can contractually agree to do it. We do it all the time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have to respond.
Oh, yeah.
He's asking you to agree to, he's asking you to add language to this agreement based on a hypothetical that he's going to win some land use appeal. Yeah, well, we did it in the development agreement before and there was no such language. You can't build in contingency after contingency. This has been fully vetted. You have your solicitor's recommendation. Please, we, we request that you get this done today.
It's been vetted by your firm and our firm, but it hasn't been approved, so I think we can make any changes we need to.
Back on the record, we had a short recess to discuss with council-
Executive session.
Executive session prior to coming back on the record right now. And I apologize, it did take longer than I said. It's now 9:35. So I had stated earlier before I left that this is a very difficult, obviously, process. You try to be fair to everybody involved and ultimately, somebody's feelings get hurt one way or the other. The board, we're no different. We, we disagree and we agree and we, unfortunately, sometimes it's, it's in the public's eye and that's the way that it should be for, for clarity and for showing that we're being fair and balanced. That being said, when a supervisor has strong opinions on things, though I agreed with some of them, there was others that I didn't. One thing, though, is I think I wanted to be clear that we are not forcing this discussion on these, on these agreements, and they've been going on for quite some time. I, I, I did submit an email to, as I said numerous times, to staff, vendors, engineers, solicitors, supervisors for any questions. And unfortunately, there was some new information that was brought to light, as Supervisor Winters had stated, a couple of days ago, and, and more questions were brought up. In fairness to everybody, we should all have the ability to read through, and that one happened to be 593 pages, in, in order to make a, a, a proper decision. I was going to throw a, a motion on the table to extend this to the 19th, which is our next, next meeting, evening meeting. However, I would like the, the option of possibly doing a, a special meeting, which we would have to advertise and we would clearly put that on the website, if, what I don't want to do is clog up a already full agenda on the 19th with something like this. And I would like to remind people that this is not to rehash what was discussed today, but to discuss new information or, or different information. So my, my option right now that I'm going to throw on the table is to extend this to the 19th with the possibility of a morning session or, or meeting that would be specially advertised and obviously given to all parties involved. Anybody?
I have no objection to it. I, Mr. Estee, does that require a motion or is that the-
Well, I think you, you have a motion on the floor, so someone has to entertain a motion to table that motion officially. So you would, if that's what the inclination is, you would do that first, a motion to table the previously made motion. And then I would say that you should have a motion to defer this matter to December 19th or a meeting which is advertised with notification to all the parties.
I do have one thing though. As, as far as the appraisals for the properties, when you said that they're in the final stages, is there any way that the board could get them ahead of time? I'm talking to B V A.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Is there, you had stated that there's, you have some appraisals that are in the final stages. Is there any way that the board can get their hands on those appraisals ahead of the meeting or something on letterhead from the appraisal?
We'll be from now?
The 19th would be the, would be the latest if not, if we, if we don't do it sooner.
I, I'm, I'm told in the next week and a half, there's a final meeting with the engineer on the B V A stormwater issue, okay, with the easement there. And he's been working on it for three months now. As far as the cement carpet go, that, that I should be able to have and I can give you the summation on that.
That, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that.
I, I'm hoping the other one, he'll be able to just give you a summation later on what he has, because I really don't know what it is. Okay.
That I want to guess. All right.
So the table, so the first motion would be to table the discussion that was started this morning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the next motion was to, to discuss these agreements at the 19th regular session meeting, if not sooner, by, by a advertised scheduled meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the new business, which would be the appointment of our township secretary. And I'm going to turn that over to Luke.
All right, in your packet is a memo from me. I'm pleased to announce that we have a start date for the success, the successful candidate for the position of township secretary. That start date is December the 17th, just in time for your regular session on the 19th. There is the language of a motion that I would respectfully ask the board to consider so that she can dive right into her duties as, as township secretary on, on the 17th. Would you like me to read the motion or?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Lisa, is it Valetes, as township secretary effective December 17th, 2019, at a compensation of $55,000 per year and that she replace Luke Revan, appointed interim secretary by the board on October 13th, 2019, as of her effective date.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution on internal ordinances and resolutions for consideration, resolution 11 of 2019, a resolution fixing the general tax levy rate and fire services tax rate for calendar year 2020. Luke?
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of, of milestones in adopting the, the annual budget that's required by the second class township code before December 31st. I, I just want to start with a conversation about those advertised meetings for the board of supervisors in the remaining calendar year. As discussed, the, the regularly scheduled and advertised meeting, regular session of the board of supervisors is the, the night meeting on December the 19th. On Monday, the Daily Local News will carry a notice of a special meeting of the board of supervisors for the morning, 8:00 a.m. of December 30th. That's a Monday. The reason that meeting initially was, was required is because I failed to get the required notice for the resolution adopting the budget and informing the public that the budget was available in the township office for review 20 days prior to board action to adopt it. That notice ran today. So it's in the Daily and Local today and then the, the 30th is more than 20 days from today. As it relates to the particular agenda item I was recognized for, this is a resolution that would set the, the general millage on the real estate tax and the fire services tax for the calendar year 2020. There is no change to the general millage. It would remain at 2.5 mills. There is a proposed increase shown, and, and this is part of the assumptions in the preliminary budget that you adopted at your regular session in November. That millage would be 0.42 for the purposes of the fire services tax. So at this time, I'd respectfully ask the board to adopt resolution 11 of 2009, setting these two millages.
So moved.
Two, I just want to correct, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public comment on agenda items. Nobody in the audience? We'll move on. Any notices? Anything else? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.